We will call to order the North Olmsted Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and I would ask Ms. Hennis to call the roll.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Herbster? Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Mrs. Rom?
Here.
Mr. Gordon?
Here, if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting for this evening. We have a pretty full agenda. So I want to go ahead and get started, but as usual, the first thing that I will do is read some announcements for the benefit of anybody who might be joining our meeting for the first time this evening, or in case you just like to hear these announcements. So great. We are providing public access to the meeting by electronic means in accordance with Ohio House Bill one ninety-seven and House Bill four oh four, granting public bodies the authority to conduct meetings in such a manner through the COVID-nineteen crisis, but currently no later than July first, two thousand twenty-one. We're doing this also by a resolution adopted at our board meeting on December sixteen, two thousand twenty, amending relevant policies. There will be two opportunities for public participation during the meeting, and you could do that by sending an email to questions@nolmstead.org. That is questions with an S on the end, at nolmstead.org. Any questions or comments submitted to that email address will be read aloud during the meeting. By Board Policy zero one six nine point one, each participant will be limited to no more than three minutes, and the total time for public participation shall not exceed thirty minutes. But as always, community members can communicate with board members by email or phone. That contact information can be found on the district's website. We will monitor the internet connection throughout the meeting, and if we determine the connection has been generally lost or dropped, or becomes inaudible, the meeting will be temporarily suspended until those issues are corrected. And the minutes will identify that each board member is here this evening in person. So that takes care of the announcements, and having done that, I am going to move to Agenda Item Two and ask if there is a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting on April first, two thousand twenty-one, and the regular meeting on April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Murphy. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Ms. Hennis, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rom? Mr. Gordon?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Zoller, before I turn it over to you for special announcements, just another quick reminder, following the special announcements by the superintendent, that will be the first opportunity for public participation, and that is an opportunity for public participation regarding matters that are on tonight's agenda. So if you have a comment or question about anything that is on the agenda for this evening, again, that email address is questions@nolmstead.org. Dr. Zoller, I'll turn things over to you now for special announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon, and welcome, members of the Board of Education and members of the community who are at home viewing. Just have a couple of community announcements tonight. I want to remind our families that the district is currently preparing for kindergarten screening. Our incoming kindergarten families received information today about signing up for kindergarten screening appointments, and we do want to encourage our families to complete that signup process as soon as possible so the district can plan for your child's screening and their kindergarten education for the upcoming school year. Want to thank our board members who were able to attend the Senior Honors Ceremony. Recently, we held the Honors and Scholarship Ceremony last week, and over eighty-five thousand dollars in scholarships were given out to our students from various civic and philanthropic organizations in the community. So we certainly appreciate the support of those organizations and businesses and recognize that that helps contribute to the success of our students. In addition to those scholarships, eleven students received an academic letter, thirty-four students received or earned an honors diploma. We had thirty-one students who received the Presidential Award of Educational Excellence, and forty students received the Presidential Award of Educational Achievement. So congratulations to all of those students, those seniors, and the institutions that awarded those various recognitions. Finally, I want to let the board and the community know that we're really excited to be able to congratulate one of our students, Junior Mario Koch, who was selected as the National Young Marine of the Year. Each Division Young Marine of the Year must meet vigorous requirements such as graduating from an advanced leadership school at the Young Marines National Leadership Academy, maintaining a high academic achievement in school, and maintaining high standards of physical fitness. As National Young Marine of the Year, Mario will escort two World War II veterans to the annual reunion of honor trip to Guam and Iwo Jima in the fall of two thousand twenty-one. So couldn't be more proud of this young man. He is an outstanding individual and just articulate, intelligent, an amazing, amazing young leader, and we're just so proud of him to have him come from our student body to be recognized on the national level as the Young Marine of the Year. It's really an important honor and recognition for both Mario as well as for the North Olmsted City Schools. So very excited about that. And those are the announcements that I wanted to share tonight. So, Mr. Gordon, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Dr. Zoller. Any questions for Dr. Zoller? Comments? Ms. Murphy?
I just wanted to congratulate all the students who are recognized. It was a great experience as a board member getting to be at the event, and I really enjoyed seeing everyone, and I'm really proud of our students and Mario as well. That's an incredible accomplishment. It was just a really cool thing to be a part of, and I'm very proud of our students. And then I wanted to just ask for the parents who need to sign up for the kindergarten screening. How do they do that? Is there a link on the website, or where do parents go who need to schedule that appointment?
Yes, there's information on the district website, and certainly they can call, you know, the office here in the administration building or Pupil Services. Mr. Calaris, anyone in Pupil Services can help direct parent to the information that, in order to access that, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Zoller, can I just add to that about the screening? We did directly email the parents that have started the process or whom are already fully registered. So in addition to the availability, we directly reached out to our families that we have any information on either full registration already or partial as well.
Thank you, Dr. Pyros.
Thank you.
I also just want to congratulate Mario and all the other students. It was, you know, been on the board for a year and a half, and it was like the first time to actually go to an event, and it was just pretty awesome to see it, and everyone did such a wonderful job putting it on, and the students are amazing. So, thank you.
Yeah, I have similar thoughts to Mr. Hall and Mrs. Murphy about our students. Very proud of all the students and everything that they have accomplished, but they should be proud of themselves. They really are. They really have done tremendous work, and not to not to put, I mean, the news about Mario is really fantastic. I mean, that is astonishing. And, you know, I wish, and maybe we can bring all those students to a meeting when we are able to open up the doors again. But I'm assuming, anticipating, expecting that in the fall, we're going to have in-person attendance at board meetings again. Could someone, could we make a note to invite Mario back to a board meeting and have him tell us about his trip? I think that would be fascinating.
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Zoller. We are at item, Agenda Item Four, which is Public Participation Regarding Matters that are on tonight's agenda. So I will check the inbox real quickly here. And I do not see any submissions that are, that are regarding tonight's agenda. There is something in here, but it looks like that will be for later public participation regarding matters, not on the agenda this evening. Therefore, Ms. Hennis, I will turn the meeting over to you for the reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon. Let me just share my screen. Can you see the screen? Okay, so this evening on the board agenda are the financial statements for April. I'm requesting the establishment of a new fund termination benefits. It's Fund O Thirty-Five that will be used to pay severance payments. And if we go forth with the severance plan, we'll use that fund for those payments set aside years going forward. There are appropriation modifications. I provided detail concerning those. They're in anticipation of closing the fiscal year. If you have questions, I can answer those. There are two then-and-now certifications that I need your approval for. Adam Coates Family Trust Scholarship and to accept three donations. A former student made a donation, Forest PTA and Maple Intermediate PTA donated wooden shed. And then I do have the updated five-year forecast to present this evening. So like to go forward with that. In November, we saw the forecast, and then shortly after that, we received word that we were going to receive substantial rebate or refund from workers' comp. And then the governor had restored some of the budget reductions that were made in two thousand twenty. So I had presented a forecast that showed where we would be at, and in two thousand twenty-three, we would be in the red at three point one million dollars. And two thousand twenty-five, it'd be twenty-six point nine. The board had decided to put a levy on the ballot, an eight-point-five mil levy on the ballot. With that revenue, if it had passed, we would have collected half of the revenue generated by the eight-point-five mil levy in two thousand twenty-two, which would have been three point five million dollars. And then going forward, it would have been seven point one million per year, and that would have given us a positive balance through two thousand twenty-four. And then we were going to have to look at making additional reductions or the severance plan or some type of cost savings to get us through twenty-five. Sorry. We're in May now. To do the forecast update, using Essar funds, Essar One and Essar Two, we were, are able to supplant some of our expenditures, including salary and benefits for our virtual teachers, and with those cost savings, we do have a positive balance through two thousand twenty-three. But as you can see, in two thousand twenty-four, we are in the red, nine point three million dollars. And in two thousand twenty-five, twenty-one point six, our expenditures are exceeding our revenues. So we are going to have to either reduce expenditures or find a way to increase our revenue. Some of the revenue changes that have occurred since that November to the May forecast that I just had shown you is the full restoration of the budget reductions that the governor had imposed from two thousand twenty. That was eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars per year. Those have been fully restored, but we are still being held to two thousand nineteen's funding level. The live, the elimination of the levy revenue projections that you saw in November, and then there's minor increases in residential property tax collections. But we did experience a decline in commercial real estate values, and we did experience a decline in our delinquent tax collections in this first half. But we're hoping in talking with the county auditor that that is due to the U.S. Postal Service. Berea saw a similar situation, and tax bills, tax duplicates were slow, slower to receive, be received. So hopefully, we see an increase in those delinquent tax payments. But the big part, the significant decrease is what you're seeing in this right-hand side in this graph. It's in our other revenues. This is where we saw significant change from November to May. And one of the biggest factors was there was a two entities that received reductions in values through the Board of Revisions, and those two entities were TIFT properties, and they received refunds. And those refunds were substantial, and they went back for multiple years. So we saw about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar decrease in our TIF revenue this year, and that will be going forward because those Board of Revision property values have decreased. So we'll collect less on those properties. We did not have before-school care for this year or the last quarter of last year, and we did not have school fee revenue this year. We also have a decrease in interest revenue due to interest rates and our declining cash balance. The changes from May or from November to May in expenditures, we normally have about eighty-five and a half percent. Our salary and benefits are currently there eighty-three point three percent, and that again is attributed to the Essar funding, being able to supplant some of our virtual teaching staff expenditures. Additionally, we were able to supplant some of our legal costs associated with COVID-nineteen-related issues, and those would be related to FMLA, the MOUs, safety protocols, PPE items, cleaning items, technology that we were able to purchase out of Essar funding rather than out of the general fund, which was an anticipated expenditure as part of the general fund. Additionally, our insurance is trending. Claims are trending lower than in previous years, and we also have a broker who took us out to market, and we are not changing any of our benefits, but we are changing providers, and we were able to lock in rates for our dental and our life insurance. So we have about a thirty-thousand-dollar savings in that provider, and we are not going to have a premium increase this year. Our employees negotiated that they would pay sixteen and a half percent of the premiums, but and the district pays eighty-three and a half percent. So next year, the employees will pay seventeen percent, but we overall will not take a premium increase, and there was eight percent, which was standard increase, standard industry increase. So that eight percent savings is factored in here. The following year, we're anticipating that we will additionally be able to see savings. We're just projecting a five percent increase instead of an eight percent increase, so that would be an additional three hundred thousand. So in insurance savings, we're saving about a million-two over the course of two years. Capital expenditures, we did not purchase a bus this year, which we had anticipated doing out of the general fund. So that is a cost savings that you see this year, but it is factored going forward because there is a replacement plan, and we have to, we can only forego that for so long. We have to keep on that cycle for safety purposes. Our cash balance, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three is only thirteen months away, and our ending cash balance in fiscal year twenty-three is six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. It is practiced to keep sixty days' worth of cash on hand. Our expenditures currently are exceeding revenues by twelve percent, a little bit over twelve percent. It would take budget reductions or revenue increases or a combination of the two of nine point three million dollars to have a positive balance in two thousand twenty-four right now. That's over twelve percent of our budget we would have to reduce. And even with that nine point three million dollar reduction or revenue increase or combination of the two, just to get us through two thousand twenty-four, we would still have that negative balance in two thousand twenty-five. It would not eliminate that negative balance in two thousand twenty-five. We would still have an issue in two thousand twenty-five. So like I said, it is common practice to have sixty days' worth of cash on hand. In two thousand twenty-one, right now, we have about eighty-four days on hand. Next year, we'll have about fifty days, so we're already behind. And in two thousand twenty-three, we have four days. On average, one-twelfth of our annual spending is for five million dollars, and one payroll is a little bit over two million dollars, payroll and benefits. So in twenty-three, we can't even make a quarter of our payroll and benefits.
Ms. Hennis, could you repeat those numbers for me that you just said about?
About spending. One-twelfth is five point one million dollars, and our average payroll, salary and benefits is two point one million, and that's based on this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I know that there are a lot of things going on right now, and a lot of talk about, you know, what if this happened? What if that happened? You know, currently, the May forecast includes all of Essar One, all of Essar Two. But I wanted to show what would happen if we saved eight hundred thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, so fiscal year twenty-three. So whether that be the ESP, the Severance Plan goes into place, we, you know, do something with transportation, there's a reduction in salaries, we close a building, or we close two buildings. Buildings, on average, when you close a building, save about four hundred thousand dollars a building, and that's if you don't have to add a transportation route, or you don't have to maintain the building for, you know, heating or maintenance outside of the building, or you don't have to do something to additional building to move, you know, students to another building. So just roughly. So whatever we do, I'm not saying it's one of those things, but whatever we do, I'm just saying, let's, let's imagine we did eight hundred thousand dollars worth of cost savings in two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. What would it do to the forecast? Right now, the forecast that we would file in May, we are anticipating six hundred and forty-five thousand dollar balance in two thousand twenty-three. If we had eight hundred thousand dollars worth of cost savings, we would have an ending balance of one point four million dollars. And in two thousand twenty-five, it would take us from having a negative balance of twenty-one million to a negative balance of nineteen million. So it's not going to overall change the financial need of the district. It's going to help improve it a small amount, but it's, we are still going to need some type of plan to reduce expenditures, increase revenue, some kind of long-term financial plan. Something that I did want to just touch base on because over the last year and a half, there has been a lot of change and movement and things happening with the pandemic, not only in our district but across the state. Typically, K-12 enrollment across the state fluctuates between six and seven thousand students. In two thousand twenty-one, forty-four thousand students moved, or about two point nine percent of the enrollment in the state of Ohio. So it's just not North Olmsted. It's all across the state.
Is that public school?
Public school.
Public. Thank you.
And of that, over the last four years, there's been a steady, steady decrease in community school enrollment. Over the last year, community school enrollment has increased over twelve thousand students. So of those forty-four thousand, most likely twelve thousand of them went to community schools, or that would be the thought. So our enrollment trend, as we've talked about before, has been declining, and part of that is because, you know, family structure, North Olmsted overall is, you know, change makeup of North Olmsted is, is changing. But our kindergarten enrollment, we definitely saw a decline in our overall enrollment. We've only changed by forty-four students. So we're, we're lucky. We only saw forty-four students. Other schools are experiencing hundreds of students moving. But it, it plays a factor in everything. So what's going to happen next year, and what's going to happen with staffing needs, building needs, monetary needs? It's a hard factor to predict. Two areas that we can say is that our community enrollment, we did see a decrease of students move from the district to community schools. We saw about twenty-three students move, and we saw an increase in students take the scholarship. So both of those are revenue bosses to the district. So community schools, when a student leaves the district, they take the full tuition with them, which is about six thousand dollars. And we have to transport them if they so choose, which is an additional cost to the district. And when a scholarships, when a student takes a scholarship, it's anywhere from ten thousand to twenty thousand dollars on average. So that's almost two hundred thousand dollars. So that's almost $200,000 additional this, this year. And I'm only bringing this to light because I think it's going to play a factor in enrollment next year and staffing needs. And it also plays a factor in the financial picture. Because when students leave, they take financial pieces with them and possibly increase our costs in area. But we are being held to 2019 funding in certain areas. Even though all these pieces are fluctuating. What triggers ODE's financial oversight designation? Which we in November received a letter from ODE saying that we were in precautionary status and we had to come up with a plan. That plan, if you have a deficit in lines 10.1 in fiscal year 21 or 22, which we do not, when we file this May forecast, we will not. And if you had a deficit in the third year of the forecast on line 12, which we will have a positive balance of 645,000 in May, when we file this May forecast. However, when we file November's forecast, we will have a negative balance of $9 million. So we will be right back in precautionary status. And ODE has the authority to place us in precautionary status at any point in time. So they could look at us in May and say, we want you to come back up with a plan. So, and we could be in fiscal caution in May because again, they have the authority to place you in fiscal caution because they feel that that's where you need to be. So to put the levy back on the ballot in November, you need to have, you need to submit all documentation to the Board of Elections by August 4th. And what that means is you have to have two resolutions passed by the board prior to that August 4th date. So first resolution does not commit you to putting the levy on the ballot. It just authorizes, you know, the county auditor to certify the millage, obtain the millage rates, certify the millage rates. And then the second resolution does put it on the ballot and we take everything to the Board of Elections. There needs to be about two weeks' time in between that first resolution and second resolution. And I wanted to just give you, not because, you know, I'm making this recommendation or anything. I just wanted to show you what the 8.5 mill levy would look like with the May forecast. So if you put the November, the May forecast with the 8.5 mill levy, it passed in November, we would have a positive balance through 2025. So next steps. Decision regarding the levy. The severance plan, employees have until May 27th to elect to participate in the severance plan. And then the board has until June 15th to determine financial feasibility of that plan. I'm sorry, June 18th, excuse me. And then depending on what we do with that, there would be action steps and follow-ups to that plan if it's enacted. Possible reductions if, and what that plan would look like, a timeline for that, and education to the district and community on what those reductions would be and what is at risk. Superintendent's transition, students returning, determining enrollment and staffing needs. The triennial update, we're, they're preparing that right now. We would get those impacts in the January. Duplicates. And then continue to monitor trends from COVID-19 and how those impact the forecast. And then decisions on buildings, closures and a transition plan for that. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hennes. We're, I don't know that it matters, but we're still in the treasurer's recommendations, part of the agenda. So I guess we should see if there's a motion first to approve the recommendations of the treasurer. And then we can open it up for discussion on any of those matters, including the five-year forecast. So.
Mr. Grodin, can we, can we pull out the donation ones and vote on that separately, please?
Yes, thank you. So at this time, I will ask if there is a motion to approve the recommendations of the treasurer contained in sections. You know, you know what, let's do the five-year forecast separately too. So is there a motion to approve the recommendations of the treasurer contained in sections 5A through 5E? Motion has been made by Mrs. Rahm. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Herbster. Thank you. Any questions or discussion about those items? Not hearing any. Ms. Hennes, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Rahm? Mr. Herbster? Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grodin?
Yes, and before we move any further, I just, again, another reminder in case anybody is joining our meeting and may not be familiar with how the procedures. We are, right now, we are working within the part of the agenda called the consent agenda. So the board has already received information on these recommendations, both from the treasurer and the superintendent. Board members have had time to review the information and ask questions previously before tonight. But that doesn't preclude any opportunities for follow-up yet this evening. But I just wanted to remind everybody that we are working within the consent agenda at this time. Is there a motion then to accept the recommendation of the treasurer contained in section 5F?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Murphy. Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Rahm. Any questions or comments? Other than on behalf of the board, a sincere thank you for all of these donations. Not only on behalf of the board, but the district, the community and our kids. Not hearing anything else. Ms. Hennes, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mrs. Rahm? Mr. Hall?
I will abstain because I'm one of the coordinators or co-coordinators of the produce market and my wife wrote the grant for the shed.
Mr. Herbster? Mr. Grodin?
Yes. Thank you all. So then at this time, I will ask if there is a motion to approve the recommendation of the treasurer contained in section 5G, which is the five-year forecast.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Hall. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Murphy. Thank you. Any, at this time, are there any questions or comments about the five-year forecast?
I would say at this time of the year, the numbers for registrations coming in are about typical. So we have, I believe, fully registered just over 100 students, fully registered. With the online, the entire online process, one thing that is nice is that we're able to monitor families who have started the process versus physically coming in for an appointment. So we have about 80 families in addition to just over the 100 who have started the process. So I would say all in all, we're about where we would be typically with fully registered students.
Ms. Hennes, with the, the $800,000 of savings that's in the forecast, was that number chosen because you feel that that could be a realistic goal going forward? And I'm just, I'm just curious about where that number came from.
The example with the 800,000?
Yeah.
Yes, I, because of the presentation during our work session, and I do feel that that's realistic.
Thank you.
I should state that there aren't any savings projected in the forecast for the severance plan because the board hasn't acted on that at the, at this time.
Thank you.
Is, is there any way to? Do you have any, let me ask it this way. Do you have any thoughts on the impact that inflation might have on this forecast? Is there any way to, I mean, are these conservative numbers or? Because I know the state funding that we've been getting has not been keeping pace with inflation. But I think we're seeing in front of, from what I'm seeing, we're, we're going to see higher inflation. So could that drive expenses up even more? I mean, just for example, if we have more, if we start seeing more community and private school students that we have to transport and gas is creeping toward $3 a gallon, right, that inflation cost factor makes things more expensive, right?
Yes, yes, it does. And there are some historical trends as part of the projections in the forecast. But there's not a significant increase, so they are conservative estimates. So there's not a significant increase for inflation at this point in time. Because it is five years. Or hopeful that the inflation neutralizes, I guess, for lack of a better term. So.
So the board is not going to be able to make any kind of decisions on the feasibility of the proposed early retirement plan until June. And I think the last time we talked about this, we were thinking that that could be handled at the regular meeting in June, which I think is the 16th. Do you, do you believe that we still can wait until the 16th to do or should wait until the 16th to do something on that? Because, you know, in short order, I think after the 16th, when we know what that might look like, we really need to have some serious conversations about what we're going to do in November.
Tonight was the last night of counseling that EPC will be on campus for. But they can, employees can still call EPC or have virtual meetings with EPC. We get weekly reports are even more often than weekly, I, I think, on status of employees who have elected to participate in the plan. But again, employees have until May 27th and then there's a seven-day revocation period. So that takes them until June 3rd. And then the board has 15 days to determine feasibility. So anytime after June 3rd, you can act on the feasibility of the financial feasibility of it. So if the board would like to meet earlier than June 16th and act on the financial feasibility of the plan, we could.
So, but given the timeline that we are looking at, if the board did want to put something on the ballot in November, are you comfortable that? If you, are you comfortable, are you comfortable if we didn't make any decisions on the feasibility of that plan until June 16th?
You would have to have two resolutions passed, so.
By August 4th? So, so there is still time to get that done? If we make that decision?
If you make that decision.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I believe there's been a motion, right? And it's been seconded. So would you call the roll, please, Ms. Hennes? Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rahm? Oh, I'm sorry. It's Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Herbster? Mrs. Rahm? Mr. Grodin?
Yes, so that motion actually passes six to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Hennes, for that, for those recommendations and the updated forecast. Appreciate it. Dr. Zoller, we'll turn things over to you now for the recommendations of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Grodin. I do have a number of recommendations this evening to bring before the board. Regarding personnel, we have a number of recommendations that would include various resignations, leaves of absence. There are contract renewals for administrators and continuing contracts being recommended for teachers. I would just note that Mr. Michael Tachek is being recommended to become the new Director of Business Services. He is in attendance tonight and we'll come back to him at a later point. There are a number of persons being recommended for employment, both certified and classified. Also, a number of people changing employment categories. And we have a number of personnel recommended for various supplemental positions and stipends for various services rendered to the district. In section seven, we have a resolution which we're recommending to grant approval for students that are on track to graduate, along with the approved list of students expected to graduate. This would be the class of 2021. And this is all contingent upon their completion of the minimum, minimum requirements for graduation. We do not have any policies being recommended at this time, this evening. So I think I'd like to include these three sections together in my recommendations. So I would ask the board if they would approve those recommendations contained in section 6A1 through section 8.
Thank you, Dr. Zoller. Just a reminder, we're still within the consent agenda. And I would ask if there is a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent found in sections 6, 7 and 8. The motion has been made by Mrs. Rahm. Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Herbster. Any discussion?
I would, I would just like to say that I was unhappy to see the district post the athletic director's position before the Board of Education had an opportunity to take action on this motion tonight. I now understand that this has been the past practice of the district. But I would still like to express my concern that this practice undermines the board's authority to make decisions governing the direction of the school district.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Murphy. Any other questions or comments? Not hearing any. Ms. Henness, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Rom? Mr. Herbster? Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grodin?
Yes. Dr. Zoller will come back to you for item number nine.
Before we move to item number nine, I would noted that Mr. Tacheck is here this evening. I would ask if if Mike would come forward. I'm really pleased to be able to introduce Mike as the new Director of Business Services. Mike is no stranger to the district. He's a graduate of North Olmsted High School. He has spent his entire career as as part of our faculty and staff over twenty nine years worth of experience as a teacher, as a coach, as an currently, you know, or previously athletic director, and soon to be Director of Business Services. So we couldn't be more excited to to be able to be to bring Mike into this new role as Director of Business Services. We understand that he is highly motivated, and I have no doubt that he will do a great job in that role, just like he's done a great job in all the other previous roles that he has served in the district. So, Mike, if you wouldn't mind just standing, and if you have anything you'd like to say to the board, this would be. Thank you, Mike. Certainly, we we all recognize that there's a lot of work to be done in the area of business services regarding our facilities. And then just the day to day operations, transportation, food service, keeping our buildings clean, safe, dry, warm. So good luck to you, Mike, and we certainly will be supporting you in all of those activities. Moving on in.
Dr. Zoller, if I might?
Absolutely.
Congratulations, Mr. Tacheck. I I know you know it's you're going to be busy with the facilities and the needs in the district. And I think we're going to have some big shoes to fill in the AD position now. But congratulations, and I think we all look forward to working with you to move this district forward.
Thank you, Mr. Grodin.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, section nine of the board agenda are my recommendations concerning operations. We have a recommendation to approve Jackie Kelly to attend some training in June, the summer. We are recommending that the North Olmsted High School Boys Soccer Team be approved to attend a summer camp at Gannon University in Erie, Pennsylvania in the month of July. Asking for the approval of the National Gas Supply Agreement with Gas Search Natural Gas Choice for all of our district buildings. Recommending approval of for our membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the upcoming school year. Also recommending the approval of frontline technologies to provide A S O P services and Apple applicant tracking services for online application systems. This is an annual renewal of that contract. Recommending the approval of payment to swings and things for facilities rental for the after prom activity. And also noting that this these funds were not taken out of the general fund, but they are coming out of some of the federal Esra dollars that we have received. Recommending that we approve the adoption of a new curriculum for language arts for the upcoming school year. This would be the Intro Reading two thousand twenty two curriculum for grades K through five. And I would note that Dr. Pyros led our curriculum committee through a lengthy process that vetted this particular resource along with other resources. And this is the recommendation that came forward from that committee. Also recommending that a number of parent in lieu contracts be approved for the current school year to reimburse parents for transportation services at the established rate from the Board of Education. And finally, recommending approval of a bid from then design architects to perform a facilities assessment for the district's six elementary buildings. This would come out of our permanent improvement funds with this assessment starting as soon as they are approved and brought into in the district into this role. So this this assessment will begin before the end of the school year and probably take us into the summer months a little bit, but we all recognize the importance of getting this assessment done so that we have a better understanding of what our facility needs are going forward. So at this time, I would recommend or ask the board's approval for those operational items contained in section nine, items A through J.
Thank you, Dr. Zoller. Is there a motion to approve items nine A through nine J? Motion made by Mrs. Rom. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Murphy. Thank you. Any questions, comments, discussion on those items? Not hearing any. Ms. Henness, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Rom? Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Herbster? Mr. Grodin?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Zoller, we're going to stay with you for agenda item ten. Other items from the superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Grodin. Continuing on. Just a couple of other things that I'd like to, I guess, bring before the board tonight. First of all, just a reminder that we continue to plan for graduation, high school commencement scheduled to take place June fourth, seven o'clock outside under the lights in the in the stadium. So looking forward to that. I know you'll be receiving some additional information from Mr. Wigley in terms of the board's participation in that event. But a lot of planning is going on right now related to that, and we're very excited. Of course, this week is prom and after prom this weekend. And certainly excited to be able to provide that for our students in person this year. Still continuing with following our COVID safety protocols to the to the best extent that we can. But I know our students have been actively engaged in planning these events and are very much looking forward to it. And really want to thank the after prom committee for all of the work that they've done to help facilitate and plan a very safe and memorable after prom activity for our students. So we're hoping that this this year will be the last year that we'll need to, you know, plan it the way we are. Hopefully, next year at this time. Things at least related to these types of end of the year activities will be much more what we've been accustomed to in the past in terms of various venues that we would prefer to use as well as the protocols getting back to normal. Talking obviously about COVID, the board is aware that there have been some new information that has gone out from various health agencies, including the Center for Disease Control at the federal or national level. The State of Ohio Department of Health, the governor, and our local Cuyahoga County Department of Health. So, you know, it's generally good news because we're seeing a decrease, significant decrease in the number of positive cases in COVID. You know, at the state, national, and local level, we still have positive cases pop up periodically. But by and large, the trend is is downward in all of those areas. You know, related to that, you've seen some loosening of some of the recommendations made by the CDC regarding mask wearing and in some other protocols that were instituted earlier in in the pandemic. And you also are aware that the governor did make a statement last week about, you know, walking back the mandate requiring masks in in a number of public entities and venues effective, I believe, June second is when that goes into fact into effect. At the same time, he did clarify that recommendation and does insist that the the masking orders and other COVID protocols related to schools be continued throughout the end of the school year. So we did notify our community and our in our faculty and staff that we will continue to operate under the current COVID protocols that require mask wearing of students and staff in the buildings during the school day, as well as the continuing to maintain social distancing and all of our cleaning protocols. So pretty much for us, this is going to be we're going to continuation of what our policy has been since we've been back in person in learning. So that information was communicated. I know that we've received a handful of, I guess, opinions from various, you know, individuals in the community that that would have preferred us to 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 discontinue the masking. You know, before the end of the school year, but we as a team met, we met with our COVID coordinator, and we feel like this is, you know, in the best interest of the district to just continue with the protocols in place. You know, through June second to the end of the school year, there's just a few more days after that would go into effect anyhow. So that's what we intend to do. At the same time, we are, we've just completed our survey that we administered for our virtual academy. We're just now taking a look at the results from that survey. Just a couple high level pieces of information. We did not get a great response from the survey. So out of the over seven hundred plus families that currently have students enrolled in the virtual academy, we we received, you know, a little over a hundred responses. So we interpret that 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 those folks intend on coming back in person next year and that they weren't necessarily interested in online options and the like. But we're gonna we'll be breaking that down and looking at that deeper here later on this week, and I'll certainly update the board on on the status of that in terms of planning for next year. Also wanted to let the board know that I'm I'm working with Fallon Research and Associates Associates to to plan for the administration of another community survey. We've worked with Paul Fallon a number of times in the past. He's done a number of community surveys for the district. And I feel like this is an appropriate time to kind of gauge the community's opinions and 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 get some input and feedback from community on a number of items, including the levy situation, the district's finances, our facilities situation with regarding future building closings and the like. And and to some extent, this past school year, how how the district handled COVID and just the the entire, you know, plan, the various plans that we had regarding the management of that. So there are a number of of areas that I'm I'm interested in learning from the community. We're in the process of putting a draft together. When I have a draft, I'll share that with the Board of Education and certainly want to get your input. If there are questions that you would like to have included in that survey, this would be an opportunity. I hope to have the survey ready to go the first part of June so that we could get the results back, you know, as soon as possible. And they could even help inform the board on some of the decision making going forward related to the levy and district finances. So just want you to know that that is in the works, and there'll be more information on that to come very soon. Finally, we were able to schedule a date for the reconvening of our community task force related to facilities. We are contacting the committee right now and letting them know that we're going to reconvene that committee virtually on Wednesday, June second at seven o'clock. So there'll be an invite going out on that. And we'll we'll invite certainly Mr. Shigalas to that meeting, and he will be available to present some of the information he presented to the board to our community task force at that time. So those are the the things that I was prepared to report to the board tonight. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Grodin, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Zoller. Any questions for Dr. Zoller on the additional items he just covered?
Dr. Zoller, with the the survey responses and the percentage being so low, that survey came out kind of around the same time that the the wine was lifting sort of the mask mandate and starting in June. Do you think that because, not really sure what the upcoming school year is going to look like in terms of mask requirements for some may have caused some folks to be a little more hesitant to complete the survey at this time?
Um, I personally, I don't think I don't think that had any impact. You know, we we did send out a number of reminder notices for for people to complete the survey. So I I believe that they were given ample opportunity and and time to be able to do that. I don't think if somebody had the intention of completing the survey, I think that they they would have completed it, you know, in the in the timeline that was offered by the district. So I don't think that had anything to do with the response. I I really believe, and as we discussed it, you know, with our team, that it it, we believe it indicates that people are anxious and planning to returning back to school in person if they have that opportunity. I mean, we're obviously we're three months out before school is going to start. There are still some unknowns, but certainly the trends are heading in the right direction. Even with students that are able to be vaccinated, you know, right now, we've been sharing that information in the community as well as when we're, you know, information is made available to us on on where, you know, children the ages between twelve and eighteen can receive a vaccination at various, you know, outlets, Giant Eagle, places like that, you know, we we are sharing that information with them. And I think all of that is going to factor into making the start of the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two school year a much safer and just put us in a much different place than we were at the start of this school year.
Okay, thank you. Couple other questions. One, I was trying to look it up, but I couldn't find it. A local school district had an issue with levy related questions on a survey that was administered by the the district for sort of crossing the the line in terms of not talking, doing levy stuff through the school resources. And I just want to make sure that we're aware of that, and we don't get into that same situation. And I can't remember. About it, especially today. And the idea of a lot of the things that happened was, especially with the levy is, you know, there were people who were uninformed and then there are people who were misinformed and just sort of how damaging sort of that was. And as we continue, and who knows when the levy is going to be put up again, because we haven't talked about it as a board, of course. But just continuing to find ways, even beyond a levies coming up soon, to get the message out about all the great things that we do in this district, especially sitting through the senior honor ceremony, just continuing to find ways to let the community know, look at all the wonderful things that our students are doing and just constantly putting that message out. Because I think it just will help down the line whenever that levy goes up again, that we have or the opportunities to have more control over the message as opposed to what happened this time, which was this sort of, other groups seem to have a stronger message against it than we did. And I think that's just something that maybe through the, the survey, we'll find out a little bit more sort of how to direct that. But it's just something that I was thinking about, and especially sitting through the honor ceremony, going, boy, the community just saw, especially the 80% who don't have kids within the district. They just saw all the great things that we're doing, that maybe the feeling would shift a little bit. So that's just my thoughts on that, since you brought up the levy. It's been on my mind a lot.
Well, I appreciate that. And certainly, you know, we, I think everybody recognized that having not been on the ballot for an operating levy for over 10 years now, going over 11 years now, that it is going to take some time to get that message out and provide that kind of information. Special elections are unique. Voter turnout was extremely low, you know, in Cuyahoga County in general, across the state and here in our own local community as well. The people that were motivated to go out had information and we recognize that, you know, taxes are a very sensitive issue. And so I think the combination of those two factors was really what made the difference, the tax sensitivity, the mileage amount, the perception of the cost and not necessarily understanding the value, which is what you're, I think, alluding to there. And then just the nature of a special election, which, you know, makes it, it's all about turnout on a special election. So I think that those are all things that are being evaluated right now. And I know there's work being done, you know, behind the scenes to, to attend to some of those issues and points that you raised, Mr. Hall. So points are well taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall, did you have something else? Okay. Dr. Zoller, you mentioned that you would hope that that survey, that Fallon survey would go out in early June, correct?
That would be our hope. Yeah.
If that's the case, when might the board see the results of the survey?
Probably take two weeks to implement the survey and get the results back. So two weeks after the survey is conducted and completed. So it just depends on when the survey would, you know, get started. And so, you know, that's something that's going to take probably a couple revisions of draft questions. And, but I know the sooner that we get that survey, you know, created and drafted, the sooner it can be implemented and we can get the results back.
Okay. And I have a question about related, it's related to your remarks about the CDC guidelines and what the governor has, kind of the, the plan that the governor has laid out there as far as mask requirements and whatnot. And, but my question is probably more for Ms. Hennis. If I, if I remember correctly, we, the district, you, we received some, I guess you would call it an opinion from one of our legal counsel about timelines for reopening the meetings to in-person attendance. Is that, do I remember correctly that we got that? And before we can do that, are there some policy adjustments that we would need to make? And, and, you know, not to put you on the spot this evening, but can you help me look into that? So that we can maybe start putting a plan together for when and how we're going to reopen the meetings to in-person attendance. I just, I remember there being some information about a timeline to consider, but I just want to make sure that when we're ready to do that, that we have all the Ts crossed and Is dotted as far as any possible policy revisions or things that we need to, any resolutions that might need to be done. Does that make sense?
And I, I did talk to the attorney and he gave me some guidelines for you to consider, especially about meeting the CDC recommendations on spacing. And if you couldn't meet those space requirements and what would happen if you did open the meetings and then you couldn't accommodate everyone. So I can send you that information, but there was discussion about there being a bill in the budget bill for the governor to sign that would extend even the current timeline to keep the meetings virtual. So I can look into that as well. That it would go past the current date.
Yeah, I would, I would appreciate that. And I think the board would too. Because I think we might want to have discussions about when we want to reopen meetings, whether it's a regular board meeting or a special board meeting for any purpose. Thank you very much. Any other questions for the items, additional items from the superintendent? Okay, thank you, Dr. Zoller. Just a reminder that we're going to go through some Board of Education agenda items. And following that, it will be the second and last opportunity for public participation this evening. And that will be public participation regarding matters that are not on tonight's agenda. So that is coming up. If you have any questions or comments, again, the email address is questions@nolmstead.org. So the next item of business is Board of Education Committee reports. And Mrs. Murphy, we'll begin with you. Do you have any reports for us this evening?
I do not.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall.
I have two. Education Foundation met on Monday, May 10th. And in addition to normal business, the trustees were updated on the foundation scholarship committee. And the foundation awarded approximately $15,000 in scholarships to North Homestead students at seniors honors night. And PTA council met on Thursday, May 13th. They heard updates from all the PTAs in the district and the board for the next school year was voted in. And the board will be Treasurer Adele Faher, Secretary Stephanie Hannah-Ann, Vice President Amy Flannery, and President Mary Cota Fan. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Herbster, do you have a report for us this evening? Mr. Herbster, you're muted.
Okay. All right. Polaris met last Tuesday night. We're doing 360 evaluations for superintendent treasurer. It's a very in-depth procedure. And I think it's been eye-opening to a bunch of us. And I, I think it's, it's longer than what we used to have. And for those of you who are aware of the old forms we had, it was, it's, it's really intense. And then we did talk about, and I will, I am going to try to author a a resolution that the North Homestead schools align their calendar as much as possible with Polaris. We've all been asked to do that. The problem is that when we're off and Polaris is going, the kids don't get any time off. And then when Polaris is off and we're going, they don't get any time. It's also hard for the teachers that are out in our districts, you know, they come out to North Homestead and they have North Homestead and Fairview. And all three schools are on different schedules. And now that we're back into kind of a normal routine without opening buildings and stuff, we're asking that when calendars are made up, that they try to align as much as possible. And we'll have an outline for that. But I will hopefully have something for the next meeting and I'll send it out ahead of time so everybody can read it and, and move forward from there. And that's my report.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Herbster. Mrs. Rom, do you have a report this evening?
I just have a quick update. I will actually be attending a meeting tomorrow with the Federal Relations Network. This is the National Advocacy Effort. And I will be attending the Advocacy Institute June 8th, 9th, and 10th. And I'm trying to schedule a meeting right now with Congressman Gonzalez. I'll learn some more tomorrow about what the Advocacy Institute will include. In the past, when we've done these FRN sessions, we've had in-person meetings with Ohio senators. I'm hoping that we will at least have the opportunity to meet with our senators virtually. So, and I'll be, I should be able to, that's before our next meeting, our regular meeting in June. So I should have a report for you at that time. I'm not aware of any new business in front of the board, but I will look around, make sure I'm not missing anything. I'm also not aware of any old business. And I am also not aware of any correspondence to the Board of Education. But again, I will make sure, looking around. I think we're good there. Okay. That does bring us to Agenda Item 12, which is Visitor and Public Participation Regarding Matters. Not on the agenda. And we do have one submission right now. And this is from Sarah Flick. She writes, following up from my earlier email asking for data and statistics, why the district would keep children masked after the mandate ends. You have the opportunity to give the children a week to actually enjoy school. The staff have been able to receive their vaccines. Per the CDC, children are statistically less than 10% of cases, i.e. a positive test, and it affects them mildly. Many other schools such as Medina, Avon Lake, et cetera, have made masks optional after June 2nd. Many other states and counties have already lifted mandates. There is no law requiring masks. Let them be optional for the last week of school and for the fall. And then some clarification on mandates from the governor's email. On Thursday, Governor announced all mandates except for nursing homes will be removed June 2nd. Friday, the governor revised the existing mandate in place per the CDC new guidelines that vaccinated individuals can now go maskless, no masks required in businesses, and start allowing for those individuals. On Saturday, the governor sent notice to schools, letting them know the above guidance and revision to the existing mask mandate does not apply to schools, meaning, under the current and existing mask mandate, schools are to follow the existing K through 12 mandate until June 2nd. Sunday, we clarified with the governor's office that as of June 2nd, all mandates except nursing homes will be removed. Schools and local health departments will have local control.
Dr. Zoller, I know we, you already kind of addressed this in your comments just a few minutes ago, but I don't know if you wanted to add anything further or may want to follow up with Ms. Flick further.
I don't really have any further comments at this time. I did share in an email response with Mrs. Flick, the document that we received from the Cuyahoga County Board of Health. So we are aware of, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that there's a lot of, you know, seemingly conflicting information going out right now. We know it can be confusing. We would just maintain that our goal is to, to provide a safe and healthy school environment for both our staff and our students. We've did our, tried our best to do that this year. I think our staff and students have done an amazing job in terms of cooperating with all of the various protocols and guidelines. There are just a few days remaining in the school year after the June 2nd. You know, information from the governor and we're just committed to finishing out the year with the, the current protocols in place. So I appreciate there's a varying opinion about how to handle that. I respect that, but I believe this is what's in the best interest of our students, staff in the, in the district at this time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Zoller. And thank you, Ms. Flick, for that submission. I don't see any others pertaining to the agenda or not pertaining to the agenda this evening. So I am going to move forward then with Agenda Item 13. And I will ask if there is a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the purchase or sale of property and also the appointment and/or employment of a public employee. Motion has been made by Mrs. Rom. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Hearing any, Ms. Hennis, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Rom? Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Herbster? Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes. So we will adjourn to executive session for the reasons stated. Initially, I would like to invite Dr. Zoller and Ms. Hennis to that executive session. When we come back from executive session, there will be no other business taken up by the board this evening. We will be returning from executive session to adjourn the regular meeting. So thank you all, and we are adjourned to executive session.
We will reconvene the North Olmsted Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May 19, 2021 at 8:18 PM. And I would ask Ms. Hennes to please call the roll.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Herbster?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy? Mrs. Rahm?
Here.
Mrs. Rick Gorden?
Here. There being no other business to come before the board this evening, I would ask if there is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Hall is their second. Seconded by Mrs. Rahm. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Ms. Hennes, would you call the roll?
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rahm?
Yeah.